Pursuant to enjoyment. May God bless this country and God bless this county. Mr. Chairman.
Our invocation this evening will be given by Commissioner Klein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the marvelous gifts. We thank you for the marvelous weekend that we had and the opportunity to give you thanks for all good things. We ask you to be with us tonight as we discuss the people's needs, wants, and issues. We ask you to salt our words and allow us to have good debate, open debate, and make the best decisions for the people. We ask this in the name of your Son Jesus.
You remain standing. The pledge will be led by a clerk.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Page Commissioner, record your presence, please.
We have twenty-two members present. Commissioner Ring sent a message that he would be out of town. That does not change the two-thirds number or the majority. Do I have a motion to approve the regular agenda? A motion by Commissioner Harris, second by Commissioner Brown. All in favor signify by saying aye. Approval of the consent agenda? Suction by Commissioner Mansfield, second by Commissioner Brown. All in favor signify by saying aye.
We've got the emergency plan on there. There's one correction on there I'd like to have made. We can do that offline or if I need to ask to have it pulled off the consent and ask for an amendment.
I'm not sure what you're talking about. What are you wanting to change?
It's just the city of White House is misspelled on the executive summary.
Okay.
Yeah.
You would have to remove it from consent, but I'll bet you our clerk will catch that since you called it to her attention. It probably will come out correctly spelled.
If that'll happen, I'm good.
Do you want to pull it?
No, if the clerk will correct it before it gets sent over, then I'm okay. Yeah.
We're going to assume it's going to be corrected.
Okay, thank you, sir.
All right. All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose light sign. Approval of minutes for October 23rd. Motion by Commissioner Schmidt and second by Commissioner Klein. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Pose light sign. And approval of minutes for October 30th. This is where we make... We had... Do I have a... Before we make a motion or a second, I have four corrections here of people that registered or reached out to me about their voting on... At the last meeting. Commissioner Klein's vote should have been no. Commissioner Boitt's vote should have been no. Commissioner Brown's vote should have been no. And Commissioner Bergdorfs' vote should have been yes. So I will entertain... You remember, we had trouble with our voting system. Even mine did not register at one time. If there are no objections to this, I have a motion to approve the minutes with that reflected. Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Right. Recognition of the public. Sharlina Allmiller.
Hi, I'm Sharlina Allmiller at 143 Rule and Circle, Hendersonville, Tennessee 37075. I'm here to ask... To speak about the veto override of Resolution 2310-11, which was a resolution to establish new procedures to review grants. I would like you to revise the resolution to include language that the good cause is based on the commission's decision. And the second revision is the only negative consequences to not meeting good cause is the commission doesn't approve the grant application. That is, the commission cannot impose punishment on a grant writer. This language would be consistent with the discussion that was had in the Legislative Committee. I would also like you to revise the resolution to include a form that is required for grant applications prior to approval. In addition to 2310-11 being discussed, I'd like to bring up 2311-03, which is an hazard mitigation plan. It was first briefly discussed in a committee during March, but it was on the agenda in May because that's whenever FEMA had... That's whenever it would have expired. And what the hazard mitigation plan is, is it's effectively insurance if we have a natural disaster here and then we can apply for grant recovery from the federal government. Well, our plan expired in May, and it's been on agendas for four of the past months, from May, June, July, and August, and then in November, and it's on your agenda tonight. Nothing in the veto override resolution would have prevented the expiration of that grant. This commission or the committees there actually had ample opportunity to review the hazard mitigation plan and didn't. And we taxpayers have been exposed to this. So if you could review this Resolution 2310-11 to include a form that just requires simple information to allow for a quick review, such as when is the grant application due, how much is it for, who is the benefiting department, what is its purpose, then you would be able to quickly see what it is. So could we. And then you would know that you wouldn't need to be able to defer it because it almost got deferred another month. One of the commissioners was going to defer it again until another commissioner asked what would happen if it didn't get approved. And that's whenever we learned that we were already expired. We had... We don't... We were exposed. So if you could please consider those changes to 2310-11 when you're considering your veto override, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Beggar.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kevin Beggar, 424 AV Wade Road. After just sitting through two hours of financial management, I saw and heard more diligence and discussion of the issues than in the last eight years of attending those meetings. But that said, I stand here tonight in support of overriding the veto for Resolution 2310-11. We sat through years of a county government that basically used the mantra of the sky is falling. You need to push this stuff through right away. You know, and if you read it, you won't have time. You just have to approve it and then you can read it after the fact kind of stuff. That kind of stuff may fly in Washington DC. It shouldn't be flying here in Sumner County. The citizens deserve to have their elected representatives be afforded the time to review these things in the long-term ramifications. And maybe that's going to mean that we're going to lose a grant here or there. But frankly, when I hear statements like, "There have been no... There have not been significant failures." I don't know how we can make statements like that when we don't keep track of anything. I just sat through the financial management. The Financial Act of 2012, which still is not fully implemented. Huh. Man, I can't believe how fast government works. But so the Financial Act of 2012 is still not fully implemented. We don't have a program to track these grants. How can we say whether we're losing money or not losing money? We've got to stop this sky is falling mentality. The citizens of Sumner County have been paying for better service than they've been getting. Take the time to do your diligence. Okay? Reject this veto. Implement the program that you proposed. I think there were plenty of other things that could have been written into it and you didn't. I'll cut you some slack on that. At least you're trying, but at least you made a step towards the right direction. So those are my two cents. Thank you. And Mr. Chairman, thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Report of the chair. I would let you know that the Veterans Service Report was included as part of your packet. And at this time, we have the most important part of the commission meeting, recognizing some of our young people for accomplishments in this county. Always look forward to this part. With the soccer team from Station Camp, girl's soccer team from Station Camp, please come forward with coaches or anyone else the coaches want to bring forward with them. And Commissioner Harris will make a presentation in our behalf.
You can have both sides if you want. Come on. Come on.
Is this all of you? Sure? This is certificate of recognition of the Station Camp Girls Soccer Team. They've done a great job this year and we want to thank them for showing up tonight to receive this award. Sumner County Board of County Commissioners meeting regular session on the 27th day of November 2023 does hereby honor and congratulate the Station Camp High School Girls Soccer Team for being Tennessee State Champions. Thank you.
Yes, the applause. The applause jumped ahead of us, but we have a motion and a second from Commissioner Harris. All in favor signify by saying aye. Let's stand and give them another hand.
I think they were trying... She was trying to take a picture. Anybody want a picture?
Would they say anything? Okay. We appreciate. You have written reports also in your packet that need no action. It's just for your information. At this time, we have election of notaries and surety bonds, and I'll ask the clerk to place that on the board. Is there a motion? And a second? All right. We'll place that on the board. It should be in your packet. It was not in the packet? If you will... If you'll wait just a moment, we'll proceed and then come back to that, and we will have a list of those for you. Thank you for calling that to her attention. I will say that in the 30 years I've been up here, this is the first time I remember that not being in a packet. So it doesn't happen very often. Commissioner Jones does have it? Okay. All right. Well, listen, we're doing too well tonight. The sky's not going to fall and it's going to be okay. All right. Health and Emergency Services Committee? Thank you. Education Committee?
We have two amendments.
Two of them deal with special education, another one with the $50,000 that was for the bleachers that collapsed at Beach. Then also the leases, I move to group and approve.
Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose light sign. General Operations Committee? Highway Committee?
We spoke about accepting... Oh, sorry. We spoke about accepting the county roads and Bledsoe Crossing development. But that's the only thing. Other than that, no report.
Committee on Committees?
No report.
Mr. Chairman.
Legislative Committee, and I am the first one in the queue, and hopefully I'll be the only one.
Veto override of Resolution 2310-11. Real quick, County Law Director's office has informed me that there is no amendments that can be made to a veto override, so just wanted to put that out there before discussion gets started. I also move.
Because a few people on the commission seem to get an inordinate amount of criticism, I wanted to say, here I am. I'm the one responsible for this. I approached the Legislative Committee about doing this after we had a problem with a grant or two, and there is nothing nefarious about this. Let me tell you, I blundered into this and I could not believe it became the issue that it did. At the time, I was thinking, what is a more efficient way of operating? And at that time, I came up with the general idea that, hey, we need some kind of prior notice on grants. So this proposal that was presented, I thought was presented well enough and acceptable enough that it would be very helpful to everyone. There was something included in there to even take care of emergency situations. So I just want you to know, there's nothing going on about this that is nefarious, that I strictly thought this was a good way to manage and to do things. And incidentally, I still think so. Commissioner Cho.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I just wanted to make note here that I had a good conversation with Judge Blanton on this a week or so back, and I had told him I was going to offer a very slight amendment to this. But learning what I've learned, which is that you cannot offer amendments on a veto override, I just want to note that for the record that I had intended to do that, and unfortunately, I'm going to have to not be able to fulfill what I told Judge Blanton. So that's all.
Commissioner Harrison?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With all due respect to the Mr. Chairman, I vehemently disagree with this approach. In fact, I commend the county mayor for vetoing it. There's a number of factors. One of which is that we already have a review process for grants. They have to come to the Budget Committee. They have to come here. We don't accept money until it goes through that process. Now, we're adding another layer of bureaucracy, which is not what Republicans are really known for. We're supposed to be limited government, not additional government. Now, what's next? Are we going to stand over, have a special call meeting to watch somebody click the button online to click submit? Is that where we're going with this? Furthermore, in this resolution, it says "the" Sumner County Grant Writer. "The" is a targeted word. Whether it's... In reference to Mr. Chairman, whether it's nefarious or not, it's irrelevant. "The" is a targeted word. Grant writer is singular. I asked on the floor last month, or I may not have, somebody did, how many grant writers do we have? We have multiple grant writers across this county. We do not have a single title in the Sumner County government payroll that's "the" Sumner County Grant Writer. You could replace that with SpongeBob SquarePants and it'd be just as effective. It's fictional. Doesn't exist. So these departments that have grant writers on staff, I would advise them, if this is overridden, ignore it because it doesn't apply. There's nobody that it's affecting. So I'll be voting against it like I did last month. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Teichner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have to say, I've gone back and forth about this quite a bit. I was 100% on board with it at first. Still may be. But I just want to say, I took some time, I met with the mayor, met with some other county heads, some officials, and then I met with Ms. Norfleet, and just got to speak with them. And I think that the one thing that... My one worry about it, just after meeting with them, because I like limiting the government as much as possible. I don't think it actually makes it larger. I think it puts more binding on the government. So I just... I want to just express the fact that when I met with them, I learned a few things. And there's one thing to keep in mind, and I want to make sure that we don't do, is I don't want to chance us causing anything to inhibit, you know, the opportunity for us to get grants because, you know, grants, ultimately, the hope is for them to be a good thing to keep the taxpayers' burden lower. But during Legislative Committee, I found out that this actually brings us into compliance with the Financial Management Act of 2012. And so, still learning as I go. I was very much for this before and after a long bunch of discussions with everybody else. I still believe I'm for it, but I just want to state the fact that it was eye-opening to get to spend some time with the people who, you know, this would affect the most. And I just encourage any commissioner who has something like this come up, it's wonderful just to get a little time with the people who are living with this, you know, day in, day out, just to see, you know, what it means to them as opposed to just me assuming what it would mean. I just think it's really important that we speak to each other and just kind of talk through the issues and figure it out. So I just wanted to share that because it was wonderful conversations all the way around with everybody I spoke with. And I just, you know, really appreciate, you know, the job that's been done in our county. So anyway.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones.
I'm going to have to call the question.
All right, the question has been called for. Is there a second? And all in favor signify by saying aye? Pose? I think the ayes have it unless someone requests the division of the House. All right. This will require two-thirds vote. A majority. Two-thirds, I think. Okay, it's two-thirds vote. Okay. All right. Clerk, do you have that on the board? All right.
Each Commissioner, please record your vote.
Okay, that falls a little short of two-thirds, so we will continue with those in the queue. Commissioner Nguyen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So last month, I asked a question on if the department heads and all those impacted by this had an opportunity to review, give feedback, and everybody was on board, and the answer was reported back as yes. I learned today that that was not an accurate statement, that there are individuals that are not okay with this resolution, that are impacted by this resolution. And that's concerning. It's really concerning. I think this resolution is solving a problem that we really don't have. I think that a simple email request, just to give me a heads up, that's all we're asking for. And while we have to add in a whole other layer of process of approval for a body who meets once a month, just seems a little cumbersome. I think that it's going to impact and hinder and hurt our county more than it's going to help. So I'm not going to support this again. Thank you.
Commissioner Boitt?
So I would like to tell you why I'm in favor of this. We have numerous grant writers out here. I don't know, is that five? Is that 20? I don't know. But they're out there writing grants. These grants all require numerous different things. If I had an employee, I don't know, out somewhere, and they write up a grant, it's a great grant, we get $20,000. It's a great grant. We get $20,000 for five years. It's great. The only requirement is, at the end of five years, they have to write a summary report. But the only problem with our county is that employee quit after two years. We continued to get the money, and we forgot where we were even getting it at. And it kind of churned along. We got a third employee, fourth employee, but when the five years ran out, nobody wrote the report. We didn't miss the grant. We don't get to keep it. We have to go find that money and give it back because we didn't write that report. We need a grant tracking system so that we'll know what our triggers are. At the end of that five years, it would have triggered accounting and they would have wrote that report. Let's keep our grants. Let's do what we're required to do when we ask for the grants. I ask you to vote in favor of this.
Commissioner Klein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm in favor of the override, and I'll tell you why. This is a very simple decision for me. I don't process things on the spot immediately. I need time to dwell on them, think about them, read through them, and educate myself on them. I think that's what we are here to do for the people. So all I'm asking in this resolution is that we get it as soon as the grant writer does so that we have a heads up. We can do our due diligence as they do theirs, and then when time comes for a vote, we're able to vote intelligently on it. So I'm in favor.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just a little bit concerned that we're pushing the ball back a month. If someone gets a grant and time is of the essence, what harm is it doing for them to get the grant, apply for the grant, and us debate it here like we're doing right now, rather than, you know, let's just say you had a grant this month in November. Well, this override, the way I'm interpreting it, is it would have to go through us first, then to the grant writer. So we're pushing it, you know, if they want a grant in November, it's got to, you know, basically come here first, then for them to get permission for them to apply for it. I don't, you know, something, you know, as critical as, you know, a mental health coordinator that we passed last year for the juvenile court, you know, what if that happens, you know? I mean, that's an important program that they're using over there. Safety issues for EMS and other things that have... for EMS and other things that have come forth before us. All this stuff can still be debated here on the floor, and disagreed on, and voted up or down. If we need more time, we could always defer. So, I just, I don't see why we're doing this. I've had other people, you know, their concerns are too, that this just pushes the ball back even further, and, you know, time is of the essence on some of these grants, so I can't support overriding the veto, just based on concerns of constituents I've spoken with, and concerns I have for some of our EMS and other departments that may need, you know, this fast-tracked.
Commissioner Shuf.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I've got two comments. One is going to maybe be some discussion on English, but the first one is, there was a comment that we've not had any problems, and that we're solved, this is a solution in search of problem, that's not true. One grant in particular that caused a lot of controversy, you know, this was a grant that was known about for over a year, and the committee got to, this is the water grant, I think we got a total of about a week to review this, and this is $15 million grant. So, you know, so, if we know about something for a year, and then the review committee that is supposed to look at it, knows about it the week before, like, you know, that is a problem. I'm not saying there's, I'm not pointing fingers, but that's probably not the best way to operate here. So, speaking of pointing fingers, I just want to notice on this, to be it further resolved, there was a comment that there's, this is only pointing out to one grant writer. So, this is a passive tense statement here, so it's a little bit difficult to unwind, but I'm going to try. The object of the sentence is actually the grant itself, even though it starts with it. And the accepting, where it says "a good cause, control of the grant writer," that "grant writer" obviously refers to this particular grant, any grant, so it could be any grant writer, who happens to be looking at that grant, so it's not toward any one individual. It is toward, it is consistent with the whatever grant that happens to be pointing back to, so just maybe a little bit of English there, but there's no issue here where this is targeting anybody, so I'll rest now.
Commissioner Becker.
Yes, I agree that we need a grant-tracking system, but I'm not sure this resolution addresses that at all. I'm reading through it again, I don't see anything in this resolution that even talks about a grant-tracking system. What I would like to do, because I agree with that, for sure, and I think there's some words, that some verbiage in this resolution that we even talked about last month, I would like to, I guess, I'd like for us to go and have this one vetoed, but then defer it back to Legislative to clean this up and bring it forward next month. So, I'm trying to think what kind of motion I can make along those lines, but, because I think we need to go ahead and vote on, I guess, vetoing this or not, and I would suggest tied to that, if the veto does occur, to send it back to Legislative to have them review the wording, and add in the grant-tracking system, et cetera, et cetera, and bring that back forward to us. So, I'll be supporting, I guess, against the override of the veto, if that makes sense.
Commissioner Mansfield.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to reiterate a point that has been made for the past three months, now that we've been talking about this, and it seems we keep reiterating the same point. I disagree with my colleague that spoke earlier about slowing down the process, I mean, as far as, there is part of the "be it further resolved" that says, "accepting for good cause, shown beyond the control of the grant writer," so the intent is to put a little bit of a governor on this process, I appreciate you bringing this forward, Chairman Hyde, to the Legislative, I understand the spirit and intent of this, based on citizens' comments on what has happened, the sky's falling, the sky's falling continually with these types of approvals over the many years, and the years that I've been here as well. And so, there's nothing stopping something from happening that is outside of somebody's control. If something comes up on a Monday, of the first Monday of the month, that needs to go through the committee and commission process, it can still do that, like a normal process, but this is a little bit more of a stopgap to slow down what would be just the skies falling and even bad grants, and I disagree with some comments made. There have been grants that we've rejected after they've come to us, because it's something we should never have applied for to begin with. I know that happened in budget, with some federal strings attached, and with some, just bad federal policies for some things, that wasn't worth attaching ourselves to it. But at this process, again, speaking of the water line grant, I mean, that was over eight months, we found out about a week, week and a half tops, of, I think it was a $20 million application, and that was a huge deal, and had this been in place, we would have known about that eight months prior. And so, I think it's a good, the spirit of it's a good intent, I definitely understand what people are saying, but I don't, and also, I said this during Legislative, is, you know, the current grant resolution we're overriding primarily, obviously, deals with future grant notifications, but, you know, this has highlighted our duty as a commission to bring the county into legal compliance with the Financial Management Act, which they spoke about earlier, and that's, I think that's where the policy comes in on how to implement this, versus the resolution is kind of your marching orders of like, what's the intent of what we're going to do, and the Financial Management Committee has been tasked with, what does this look like practically with bringing grant writing into the finance system that has currently not been tracked, so we've not been in compliance with the law for many years now. So, I definitely appreciate you bringing this forward, so thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to be voting for this.
Commissioner Palmeroy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Like I pointed out last month, when we talked about it, I do get confused, I don't know if we knew about the water grant eight months, or a year in advance, or if we found out it a week and a half before. If you knew about it eight months in advance, I guess you knew about it eight months, I don't understand that. What I do know is, I feel like what I've constantly said is, I think that you had very good intentions with this, we've spoke about it, but like so many of the things we've passed, it is currently written poorly. It's who makes that decision on what is an emergency that can come up, and what committee votes on that? And what is the criteria to make it be something? It's just so nonchalantly said, well, if it's important, we could go ahead and do it. And I just want to know, like, based on what? And based on what is important, and what's not important? And what is the criteria for an emergency? What's not a criteria? This whole, we just wrote it, and we think we have good intentions, and yeah, if something comes up that, and I would ask that to whoever, that comment's been made several times, who is the person who decides if it's important enough to go ahead and get to the committee? I don't think anybody knows. I don't think there's any definition, there's no wording that, and we always say it's just words, but that's all we pass. Everything we pass is just words, and I know everybody looks at me like I've got, like, I'm not trying to be a problem, I really just can't find the actionable word that lays out what that is. I did hear another commissioner say, hey, we need a grant-tracking system. Yes, we do. I didn't read anything in there about a grant-tracking. I heard another commissioner say, I don't process information that way. So, if, what I understand is, is this is going to be, if a grant comes up, they have to bring it to, and as I asked last time, I don't even know what committee, I think we decided on the floor, it's now going to General Ops, I think, I don't know if that got even put into the resolution, but somebody who works for one of our county departments, if they see a grant that they might want to apply for, has to send it to some committee that we don't know, because it's sure not spelled out in here what committee that goes to, they'll send it to some committee to look at, to see if we think they can spend the time to apply for it. And we will vote, and I'm assuming we will vote that they can do that, and then a month later, if they do apply for it, they would come back, we would have a chance to look at it then and vote for it. That, I just don't understand that. But what I would really say is, I'm all for what Mr. Chairman's trying to do, we agree on a lot of stuff, I just think we got to word it better, because you wrote it, what is the emergencies that get through there, and who is the person who decides if it's emergency, and if there's a criteria on the emergency? And then what committee will send grant writer, which could be in multiple departments, which now that could be plural for anybody who ever writes a grant, what committee are they supposed to send that to? Because that's not in here. So, we're going to send out our employees whenever we vote to send, next month, and if they want to see a grant, are they just supposed to email you, or the county mayor? Who are they supposed to email to say, hey, we might want to apply for a grant? What committee do we get this on? I think those are reasonable things to talk about. I would vote for something like this if it was just written better and had those answers, but I will be supporting the mayor in this. Thank you.
Commissioner Jones.
I believe this is pretty clear in how it's written, there's, it's not difficult for me to understand the intentions behind it, and I think it's very clear, but one thing is, every one of us brings different skills and strengths to this commission. Some of us be skills in construction, or building, and some of us may be accounting, and good with numbers, and some of people in here are ravenous readers that can retain everything that they read. I want to give those of us on this commission that can read, and I'm not one of them, at a rapid pace, and understand all these things, the time to do it. I want to try to win the votes of some of my fellow commissioners that have spoken against this so far, but some comments were made that, why couldn't we just debate it here, at the commission, and defer it till later? I just think those are kind of unfounded, because time is of the essence on these grants, so they can't be deferred. Reading it here, and debating it here, there's not enough information gained by doing so. So, getting it to us as fast as possible is the key. The language that was put in there for emergency stuff was there to allow the grant writer, the grant writer, whomever that may be, to explain why it was done at the last second, and how important it is. That's where the decision was going to be made on whether it was allowed or not. That was what the language was, it was very clear. So, I don't understand what the holdup is for. I'll be supporting overriding this veto.
Commissioner Shuf.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I just want to address one thing that my fellow commissioner pointed out over there. We actually had this debate in Legislative about the level of detail that this resolution, and somewhat lack of detail, and there is a difference between a kind of strategic guidance, and then SOP kind of tactical detail. And so, the resolution is general in nature, it kind of, it outlines the what, and the purpose of it, you know, this is not going to be, I think, the end of this, it is, we're, you know, we are not trying to micromanage down to the policy level of the county mayor's department, or any individual department. I think what this does is establish a guideline, and then the result is that the county mayor's office, as the executive branch of the county government, would come back with a how they intend to execute it. So, that policy would be the kind of tactical details. I think it would be, if we start getting into that level of detail, at the resolution level, and telling, hey, you should email this email chain, or this position should, you know, fill out this particular form, that's too much for a resolution. What, you know, as I understand this, is, this resolution, it's legislative, as a legislative body, we establish the what, and then the executive branch will come back and establish the how, how the compliance within those departments will be met, and those tactical details will come out there, not dictated by us. So, I'm fine with the resolution, you know, as I noted, I was going to make a couple amendments to it based on some conversations, but, you know, at the end of the day, this is not meant to be a tactical SOP. This is guidance.
Commissioner Teichner.
Mr. Chairman, I'm just going to keep it really quick, but I just wanted to address a couple of things, because I know I have several folks in the district who watch at home, so I just feel like that it's appropriate just to address a couple of things. The question came up earlier from a fellow commissioner about, did we know about it a week, week and a half, talking about the water grant, or eight months, or whatever? All that means is just that, that the county was notified many months before the commission, which is the legislative body that represents the people, were notified. So, that, all that means is, eight months, a year, whatever it was, was just to explain, I know you probably know that, but just to explain, it was many months before that the county was notified, and then the commission only found out about it, just with a few days left. That's one, for instance. Another one, too, when we were in Legislative, Commissioner Brown brought up something that really helped me, educated me, and it was about a grant that was, that was not passed in budget, because there were so many strings attached about, like, new systems we'd had to put in place for the HVAC system, if we were going to get a grant from the federal government, and it was going to end up costing us a lot more money than what we really would have benefited from the grant. Third thing is about what appropriate committee. It's a grant, so if we were going to get a big dump truck full of pavement, it would go straight through highway, but if we're going to get a grant, it's always going to be a dump truck load full of money, it's going to always go through budget. I mean, if anybody ever wonders, they can look back at this, it'll go through budget, always. And the last thing, I don't think it's unclear, I was just clarifying in my earlier statement, that I met with some various folks in the county, that were great about educating me, and I learned a lot, but like I said, it gets us in line with the Financial Act of 2012, Financial Management Act, forgive me, and it just seems appropriate to support it on those terms alone. I don't think it makes it larger government, I think it makes it actually a more bound government, to just following it. And all it amounts to, just to sum it up, it's just sending out an email to budget chairman, chairman says, okay, let's look at this, and then, and it comes before the committee, and then goes before the, it's not really much different at all, and that's only in the times that there's a long expiration date. If it's eight months, we get a longer time, longer lead time, that's all it means, and that's the only reason why that I came to the conclusion that I felt comfortable with it, was because of that giving us an option for a longer lead time on these larger grants. It's a very small grant, we won't get much lead time, and so that would be the exception to the rule, and that's who makes those decisions. If we get an option to vote on something that's a grant, we got, you know, a week and a half, it's going to come forward, and we're going to, it's going to go through the normal protocol, just like it always does, is what, that's how I read it. Anyway, I'll stand down, I just wanted to share that with you. Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Nguyen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think there's been some very good points brought up, definitely some concerns. One that I just want to reflect back on is, one of our previous speakers spoke about tactical versus strategic, you know, a strategic document is essentially one that will align everybody to a focus, to a point, to everybody needs to start moving towards. This is everybody aligned, but it doesn't point to anything, and I think there's fair questions as to who makes decisions, who should these information be flowed to? I think those are very fair things to ask, and I definitely think that they need to be spelled out, because, you know, are we saying that as a legislative body, we just say, hey, we need this, and then it's up to the mayor's office to figure it out and implement? And if that's so, then should the, does the mayor field the emails, and is he the conduit for determining who has, you know, the authority for emergency grants or not? I think it's a fair question to ask. Also, too, you know, if we're sending this back to a committee to review, just for the application, to approve application, or to not, you know, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but the committees only have the authority to make a recommendation of this body. So, we would then have to have a whole other vote at this level of the commission, on whether to approve something to vote for. To me, it's very clunky, I think we can do this. I think we can do this with, you know, hey, working with the mayor's office, he already said in his veto letter that he's more than willing to implement a process to better communicate. I think the problem is solved. We've had, to my knowledge, the water grants, the big one that everybody starts to point to, but that's the exception, and that's not the rule. And I think we'd have a different conversation if every grant that came through was last minute, was you only had a day or two to look at, or a week, you know, but, but it's not. So I just, I truly feel that this is just unnecessary. Also, too, I just want to speak briefly on the tracking system. I agree, we need to be tracking grants, and if we don't have that, then that needs to be implemented. But, you know, as I'm reading through this, and please point out if I'm overlooking it, where in this resolution is it calling for or spelling out the requirement for a tracking system? It's not. So I think we're saying things that aren't in the resolution, we're saying this accomplishes things that it truly does not. And again, I think that we are solving a problem that it really does not exist. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I don't believe this is adding another layer of government. This is, this is discipline that we're looking for. We're trying to get something in order to make sure that we are not looking at things at the last moment, that we are looking for things within the grant that might hinder us from being able to implement them properly and also give the taxpayer the best bang for the buck. Secondly, we just don't, do not need the random induction of these grants coming to us in a very short-fused manner. Now, that being said, trying to implement the discipline, I'd like to offer an amendment. Okay, that's, I'm done.
Good thought. Commissioner, let me say at this point, Commissioner Harrison, let's, we need to move along with this. We're sort of getting to the point of beating a dead horse right now, and I'm hearing the same thing two or three times, but Commissioner Harrison.
This will be very brief. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The complaint was we only have a week and a half to review the water grant. It was still plenty of time to come up with stipulations to put on the annexation by the cities. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Janon.
Thank you, Chairman. I've read over the mayor's rebuttal of the resolution, and as he states, the application can take time, it's a process. The grant writing is a process, takes time, that's true. He says that they're waiting on other parties to give information for the grant. That's true as well. Sometimes you're waiting on another entity to do that. So if that's happening, then what is the, there, I don't understand why it, he would consider that a red flag. So the other thing is, he said with the current resolution, the summer county had a significant disadvantage in submitting competitive applications that would be benefit to the citizen, and he go on to say that without grant opportunities, it would not be available without significant property tax increase. Now, I find that kind of somewhat of a scare tactic, but I don't think that that's the purpose of the resolution. I think the purpose of the resolution is to provide a beginning of a process, a process improvement, to give everyone, because he says in his letter, the commission as the legislative branch of the county has final authority with the allocation of grant funds when received, and that's true. So that means that, marry me, I'm, I'm sitting here and I'm saying you want to, you're asking me to approve twenty, ten million dollars for a grant that you've come about. So instead of letting me know ahead of time or in the process, as Ms. Boyd has, Commissioner Boyd has said, we do need a legislate, a grant writing tracker, because a lot of grants do take years, and they don't always just jump out at you right at the start of the horse race. So he says that this is an unnecessary bureaucratic overreach, which represent antithesis of efficient delivery of government services. I disagree. I think that it's a way for us to present a process improvement. It doesn't say that this is the end-all, do-all. I think that, you know, in working with the specific departments, I've sat in committee meetings where the, in the EMS, where they brought forward, they'd like to do a grant on things that they need over at EMS. I mean, it's not like it's a mystery, but I feel that this is a little bit of saying, on one hand, you're responsible for it, but on the other hand, we don't want you to know about it until it comes forward. Now, regarding this wordsmithing on the resolution, what I read it as, they're saying to whoever the grant writer is, we would like you to bring the information to us when you're getting ready to do it, you're applying for it, okay. If you are applying for something and it's late, then there's a grace. Yes, okay, we'll understand that. You know, it's not like we're going to chop your head off. So I think that there's a lot of, I understand what everyone's saying, and I've been listening and hearing what everyone's saying, but I think that we're making a big mountain out of a molehill here, and I disagree with the mayor. I think that that's a little bit different than what I thought he would do. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'll ask Commissioner Becker.
I just, I just want to reiterate what I said earlier. I mean, there's been at least two or three, maybe four commissioners who tried to, or who are planning on making amendments. I truly, I think we should go ahead and, and allow the veto to go through here, and then ask our legislative to really sit down and send us something new, because I think there's valid intention, it's, it's, there's merit to having something. I just think we just need to, we need to do it right, right? We need to make it, make it right, you know, listen to whatever the amendments were. We didn't even hear, hear what those amendments were. So I would just support, and hopefully others will support, having legislative look through this again and go ahead and vetoing this tonight. Thanks.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be real quick. I've heard a lot of concerns here tonight. I'm kind of echoing what my fellow commissioner just said. I think it makes sense to, you know, support the veto tonight, allow legislative to take it back, address all the concerns that have been brought forth tonight on the floor, and let's bring it back for another vote. I don't think the sky's falling if we take that approach. So I just want to go on the record, I, yeah, I'm all for supporting tracking where our tax dollars go when it comes to grants, et cetera, but I'm hearing too many concerns from my fellow commissioners that want to make amendments, they can't, because they've been advised they cannot on this. So that's what I would like to see happen, you know, after tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Lot of discussion about this, the veto, overriding the veto and so forth, and the actual policy Again, I go back, and I agree with what's coming late here, is that we should take this back to legislative, let's talk about this a little bit. If we let the veto stand, as I said before, I think it would be prudent on my office to work with the legislative body, and let's put together a policy that makes everybody happy, that will be able to work with the grant writers throughout the county, those such as Recovery Court, Health Department, the sheriff, the Drug Task Force, our library system, our regional grants with the cities, any constitutional officers that are involved with the grant process, and our Veterans Administration. I think all of those should have a voice in trying to implement and craft a policy that will be good for the county. I have no problem with working with this body and trying to do that. I just don't feel that this resolution answers the questions that will be left once you override the veto. You know, there's just, there's several here that are of concern, and I just think that we can take a step back and work together on this and put together a good policy that will solve all of our goals. Thank you.
Commissioner Boyd.
So some of you were in financial management about an hour ago. We voted to implement whatever it takes to get the 2012 Act implemented, to take steps forward. We don't get an audit finding as long as we're taking steps forward. If we don't take steps forward, we get the audit funding. We have in the 2012 Act a grant ledger. Financial management is looking at implementing that. That means we will put the grant information in, and we will track it, and we'll let everybody know what's going on in our county. Complete transparency to our citizens, they can put in an open records request at any time, see what's out there, see what we're doing. Financial management voted. The mayor was in the room, he didn't oppose it. He sat there. I don't know, he didn't say yes, he didn't say yay, he didn't say nay, but he was there one hour ago. That's all.
Commissioner Jones.
With all that being said, I'll try this again. Let's call the previous question.
What is your point? What, how would you, he can. All right, motion and a second. I'll ask the clerk to put it on the board.
Each commissioner record your vote.
Receiving the, well, receiving eighteen votes, that's two more than two-thirds, so we will vote at this time, and I'll ask the clerk to place it on the board. This is simple majority. Yes, yes, to override the veto and no to not.
Each commissioner record your vote.
We're not working again. All right, record your vote.
Anyone not voting wishing to vote, anyone wishing to change their vote?
Pardon? Anyone else's that failed to vote one way or the other that wants to record your vote? Wait, pardon? I, I'm going to rule that we're not going to revote on that. We had one person whose machine didn't function, and he has verbally recorded that. It's thirteen, and the veto is overridden by thirteen votes. Mr. Schof, budget.
So 2311-08, approved delegation of 104,868 for rural fire departments, I so move.
Motion by Commissioner Schof, second by Commissioner Mansfield. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying, well, let's record this, since it's a large amount of money.
This is 2311-08.
Yes.
Each commissioner record your vote.
All right, with twenty-two affirmative votes, that passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. 2311-09, appropriating carryover for resource authority and education bonds, I so move.
Motion by Commissioner Schof. Second by, who is that? Commissioner Schmidt. Oh, let's record that, too, Madam Clerk.
Each commissioner record your vote.
2311-10, appropriation of forty thousand dollars for the Gallatin library carpet, I so move.
Motion by Commissioner Schof and second by Commissioner Lambert. No discussion, so clerk place that on the board.
Each commissioner record your vote.
With twenty-two affirmative votes, that passes.
2311-11, appropriation of ninety-one thousand ninety-three dollars for opioid staff to the finance department.
Motion by Commissioner Schof, second by Commissioner Klein. There's no discussion, no one requesting to speak. Madam Clerk place that on the board.
Each commissioner record your vote.
We have seventeen affirmative votes, and that passes. Now, we are going back to, is that all on your?
That's all, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
We're going back to notaries, and we had a motion and a second, and clerk, do you have those, the motion and second? All right, well, once again, let's have Commissioner Pomeroy, second by Commissioner Harrison, and we will let the clerk read those, and then we'll vote on them, unless you, did you pass that out? Okay. All right, well, that is great. So let's vote on this, then.
Each commissioner record your vote.
With twenty-one affirmative votes, that passes, and I have not adjourned, so hold a moment. We are fortunate this evening to have a young man, would you stand, please? Who is visiting the commission and from his government class at Cumberland University, and he's probably saying he will never, ever be a county commissioner. But we're glad you're here tonight and hope you learned a great deal. Appreciate your university sending you out to learn things like this. Is there anyone else here from the class? Okay. All right. You're adjourned.